All right, we got everybody? I'll go ahead and call to order the special call meeting on the 10th of June at 6:00 PM. And I asked Ms. Callen to conduct roll call, please.
Mayor Franklin.
I'm here.
Councilman Eddie Baumann.
Present.
Councilman Griff- Griffin.
Here.
Councilman Donald Brock.
I am here.
Councilman Sloane Griffin.
Here.
All right, thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Callen, was the notification posting of agenda done in accordance with state law?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So now we'll join Councilman Donald Brock for the pledge and the invocation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a flag present, but apparently Mr. Cook is going to share one. So if everyone will place their hands over their hearts. I pledge allegiance. Of the United States. The Republic, for which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. All right, well, everyone join me for our prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. For the rain you've blessed this community with and the wonderful weather we've had this past week. Father, we come before you at a crossroads where communities are in conflict with one another. We ask for your guidance and blessings as we strive for calm and understanding. We ask that you give us the wisdom to listen versus speak, to understand that while we are different in so many ways, we are the same. We ask your blessings on this beautiful town, our first responders, our military abroad and domestic. We ask that you lead and guide us, and we pray our decisions will positively impact the community of Blythewood. All these things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen, thank you, Mr. Brock. Okay, now we'll begin tonight with the council members' remarks. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, we did skip oversee. We did not approve the agenda.
I apologize. Thank you very much. Okay, moving now to part C, the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
It's been probably moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, motion passes. Thank you, Mayor Proton, for correcting me there. Moving now to council member remarks, and we'll begin with Councilman Griffin Larry.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Glad to see everybody and hope everybody is safe and sound. Because of our agenda tonight, I don't have very much to say. I just do, I'm gonna pass a lot of what I know Councilman Junior Griffin is gonna talk about, so I'm gonna pass that on to him. And, uh, but we just want to say that the COVID and the, and the PPE has worked real well. Glad for the town of Blythewood. There are a couple of issues that's gonna come up a little bit later, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure whether or not I should bring them up tonight. So I'll just wait and see how this goes, and then if I need to, I'll intervene.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. We'll move to Councilman Donald Brock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In light of the topics that we are gonna be discussing, I will also keep my comments brief. I want to extend a huge congratulations to Derek Pugh for his victory in yesterday's Democratic primary. I think it's very exciting for Derek, and I'm looking forward to potentially working with him starting next year. There was a couple of other individuals that won their races yesterday. Chip Jackson, his district does border ours. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that I'm very proud of my good personal friend that I've known for 20 years, Overture Walker, over in District Eight. They also butt up against us. He's in a runoff, but I expect good things out of him as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I yield the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Sloane Griffin.
Evening, everyone. Pray and hope that everything has gone well in your family and in general in your life as we continue to move through a COVID environment in this invisible warfare that we have been in for several months now. I'll try to make my remarks brief, but I think part of my remarks will play on into our agenda a little bit, but I do want to give a quick briefing that I have been giving to the task force every time we have met. Just some rough numbers today, COVID-19 numbers in South Carolina, and we're looking at 15,759 positive cases. When we dive down into Richland County, we're looking at 1,938 cases. We look into Blythewood, 2901 zip code, and we're at 87. What I have been doing for the task force that's very unique is giving them numbers that border us, because it gives us a broader idea of what's going on. That's a total of 746 positive cases that surround Blythewood. PPE update, we have given out over 1,300 bags of PPE, and we have used 18 gallons of hand sanitizer today. Thank you all for supporting that, and kudos to Steve's staff up there for manning that station through the weekday. We had a couple of businesses on the task force send lunch up there Monday and Tuesday. So thank Steve and his crew for getting that done. Julie and Brian for having to juggle with people stopping by also at Town Hall. So thank y'all. Just a quick update on the task force. Last week, we spoke with Councilwoman Dickerson. We spoke with Mr. Greg White, who is the SBA US District Manager for the South Carolina region. Todd Timmons, who is the Chief Legal Officer for Department of Employment and Workforce. And Dr. Koska, which is third in charge of epidemiology at DHEC. So very good meeting. If you missed it, you missed a treat. So just give you quick numbers. There were 311 people that tested at our Blythewood site. At Westwood, got those numbers in, and I'm waiting on our representative, Garvin, to give me today's numbers. Outside of that, that concludes my lengthy update this afternoon. So we'll get ready for the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lengthy, but very important, and thank you. Personal thanks goes out from me to council members Sloane Griffin and Donald Brock for, and the staff for giving out those bags. I was out there on the first day that they initiated it. It goes through this Friday, so please pass along to your neighbors and friends to just swing by there. You don't have to get out of the car. And they'll bring you a bag with some masks, some gloves, refill your hand sanitizer, and it's a great public service. So thank you both for leading that charge. A very important service for our citizens. Now we'll move to Councilman Eddie Baumann.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. I just wanted to follow up on Councilman Brock's remarks and just wish everybody well that ran and their votes, but I just want to recognize those warriors that stayed out there till almost midnight, 11 o'clock last night in some polling places that weren't able to get in. I mean, that seemed to be crazy, having three precincts in one place, having people out after 11 o'clock at night last night. But, you know, they were troopers. They did their duty and voted, voted their conscience, but I tell you, some places just had nightmares. I walked in and walked out in five minutes yesterday. Piece of cake. Was there 7 o'clock, we had voted and left by 7:05, and then I heard horror stories of people sitting out there for two and a half hours, even in the handicap line. So I think these things need to be addressed with Richland County. I know they did the best they could. I watched Dr. Austin on TV last night. Of course, you know, Jim Meggs and I worked with the city with Dr. Austin, so I know he's a good man. He'll do what he can to get this rectified by November. Just wanted to invite everybody out on Friday to local, the VFW, Post 8346, 6:00 PM. We're having a flag retirement ceremony. Flag Day will be Sunday, so we try to do it as coincide with Flag Day. So we'll probably retire about 200 flags on Friday afternoon. So very moving. They will social distance, but right now they've opened back up and things are moving smoothly up there, so they wanted to do what they always do to honor our nation's emblem and retire it in the proper way. So, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. And for my comments, I'll keep it brief. I just want to say thank you to all the citizens who came out and voted, exercised their constitutional right to do so, even in the face of the threat of COVID-19. Lines were long. I know it's frustrating when you go to vote after you get off work and then you have to end up staying there till 11:00 PM at night. So those are tough issues. I'm sure the county did the best they could when they tried to consolidate. I know a lot of the workers that normally get paid to man the poles did not want to come to work and expose themselves. I respect that also. But for the folks who stayed and voted, they are heroes, and that's your constitutional right. Many, many people have fought for that right, and I'm so glad that people exercised it. Again, I went at noon. It took me about 27 minutes at Blythewood High School, but that was not one of the consolidation sites. My only advice here to all the public is vote absentee in November. If you're concerned about the virus coming back, all those rumors are abounding. Just vote absentee. You don't have to worry about these lines. I'm not sure if they're gonna do it the exact same way, but there's always a 30-day prior absentee process in our county, and thank you all. I appreciate it. Now we will move to the budget workshop, unless I have any other comments. All right, Mr. Cook, if you'll bring up the slides. What I want to do, Councilmen and, and general public, is I want to get through every slide as quickly as possible. So I know we had our operational budget. We didn't have any issues with that, but if you do today, just stop me as we keep going through. What we really want to focus on is the discretionary side, the, the state accommodations tax, local accommodations tax, hospitality tax. I know those are
I don't want to interrupt you, but I'm getting a text saying that the link is not listed on our website and people cannot access our meeting.
Okay, I'll stand by, Mr. Cook.
They're saying that the link's not on the website and they can't access the meeting.
That's our website. I just clicked our website, clicked on that, so maybe if you try to refresh the screen and try it again. I'll just kind of go back and do it, just double check, but it's our website. I don't know if you can see it with the glare. Click on the YouTube link. There we are. And there we are. This, maybe just refresh again and give it a shot, because it seems to be working.
We'll stand by for a couple of seconds to give the public an opportunity, but I will mention that Councilman Larry Griffin does have to leave about 8:45 PM. Hopefully we won't go that long tonight, but I'm gonna try to keep us on pace tonight more.
They're on. The ones that text me said they finally got on, so they're on.
Great. All right. So there we have it. On the screen here, and we're looking at the operating. I can't even see. Can you zoom?
He wanted to start with the general fund, Brian.
Well, I just wanted, does anybody have any questions for the op, the base budget? And if we want to go slide by slide, we can. Council members, speak up now. I know this is just a workshop, but I want to make sure you're comfortable with pages one to the end. And we went over it in detail in the past. The issues where we had conversations were the accommodations and hospitality tax. So we're on one, okay? That's the general fund revenues, a kind of a balanced rollup. Okay, keep going. Expenditures, revenues. And they, and Mr. Cook, for the record, no changes on these slides whatsoever from last time?
That's correct.
Okay. They still expenditure over revenues and revenues.
This is the outside agency.
Let's stop, stop right here. Okay, we did have changes here, not from the last slideshow, but from the original base budget, and I want to talk about it. So we have the Transition Center for homeless, which serve Blythewood as well as Columbia. We have the Christian Assistance Bridge, which is also homeless right here at Trinity Church in Blythewood. We have the YMCA, which is just outside of Blythewood, but many of our children participate, as well as adults go and work out and swim at the Y. We always give them a nominal check every year to help with their operating budget. We have the Greater Blythewood Chamber of Commerce. We have the Meals on Wheels and the Senior Resources Center, which we, every year we sponsor. We have the Big Red Barn Retreat, which we sponsor. We have Camp Discovery, which all our schoolchildren here in Richland School District Two take field trips there. We sponsor them. We have a new sponsorship, which Councilman Sloane Griffin will speak of shortly, Community Keys Program, which has a culinary arts program for children and is now moving into Blythewood area. And so we'll ta, we'll pause right now, let Councilman Griffin, if he would please, describe what they do. Thank you, sir.
Yep, no problem, sir. So to give the council and the general public a overview of what we're gonna do with Community Keys. Community Keys is based in Columbia, which is part of the overall Richland County. They provide programs to children of all income groups in Richland County, in fact, not just Richland County. They stretch all the way down towards the coast in some aspects with their program. One key thing that I'm working on with them for Blythewood is retrofitting our playground equipment with handicap accessible playground equipment so that children with certain disabilities can enjoy the outside environment as normal as possible. Another program piece that they're bringing here is the culinary arts piece of it that I got to witness and see how that group does it. They bring in professional chefs into play and teach the children cooking techniques over a length of time, and then they're able to present their entrees to whoever that sponsored them or family. And then one other unique thing, going back to the children with disabilities, they're looking at raising money and focusing their efforts here in the Blythewood community with a special needs prom, silent DJ that will be involved in it. That consists of wearing headsets with different colors. They're silent, and they work with doctors and psychiatrists that specialize in those needs to help the children have an enjoyable process with that event. Many more programs that they can bring into it. I thought those were the highlight that I really thought that, you know, that we could use in the community and give us another layer of support in our children here in Blythewood. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I yield and pen any questions that council may have or the general public.
I appreciate it. Of course, I went to the website recently, and I believe they went out and got 600 masks when we had the mass shortage and delivered it to healthcare providers in the Blythewood area.
Yes, sir.
Very nice gesture there, and I appreciate their efforts. Any questions, council members, because this is a new funding request. Now, when I say new, it's new this year. It has been in the past discussions. I apologize. Don't want to confuse anybody. And then the final was the Stonehouse Ministries of Trinity United Methodist Church, right there on the Magnolte Street. Every year we do sponsor them. I believe former Mayor Mike Ross will come before us in the near future and give us a briefing on the extensive services that they provide our community to possibly increase that funding in the future. Any questions at all about this slide? And then down at the bottom is the, obviously, the, the transfer to the manor, the transfers of one account to another to balance the books. Mr. Cook, any comments about those? Or Ms. Julie? Okay. Any questions at all? All right, next slide. All right.
That takes us to the state accommodation tax revenue, and what we did here, Mr. Mayor, members of council, is basically, as you can see, or hopefully you can see at the bottom, I know it's kind of small. Any of the events that are proposed to receive funds out of the state accommodation tax revenue are at the bottom of the page. I'll just read over them real quick in case you do have a hard time seeing them, but basically it's the Diamond Invitational, the Doca Radio, Doca Film Fest, Queens of the Castle Basketball Showcase at Westwood, the All-Star Tournament, baseball youth tournament, and the golf tournament, the third Supp Gun Open Championship. So all of those are proposed. What we did is we basically showed what we think we're going to get this coming up year. We also carried over what we had in the fund balance from last year's fund. The state accommodation tax is a little unique, and the fact that a portion of it has to be spent immediately, that would be the 30% that's shown on the budget. The remaining 65% is supposed to be spent within two years, so that would be the carryover amount that you see to provide the funding that we're looking at today. So that would pretty much cover state accommodations revenue. Again, just to reiterate, you know, this is money that we shouldn't be spending every year, 30% funds when we get it immediately, and the 65% within two years. Short of that, we should be asking for an extension with the state to fund a specific project. But that is pretty much what we have for this page.
Questioning, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, please, Councilman Griffin.
Administrator Cook, what projects, just for example, what other projects can we use the ATAX money for?
You're talking specifically about the 30% or the 65% or just in general?
65 and then in general.
Okay. So the ordinance for the state is pretty specific, and the idea behind it is you're supposed to be bringing in tourist dollars to stay in hotels, basically, is a way to kind of look at that. Basically, I'll just kind of briefly touch on 30%, just to kind of keep it well-rounded there. But 30% is supposed to be allocated to a special fund, used only for advertising and promotion of tourism, you know, be your chamber, your convention bureau. You know, ongoing tourist promotion program is kind of the idea behind that specifically. Now, the 65% money, you have a lot of flexibility there on how you could be spending that money. But the idea behind it is that you're supposed to have tourism-related expenditures coming out of that. So it could be potentially advertising and promotion of tourism, so as developed and increased tourist attendance through generation of publicity, promotion of the arts and cultural events, construction, maintenance, and operation of facilities for civic and cultural activities, including construction and maintenance of access and other nearby roads and utilities for facilities. Also goes into potential for using law enforcement or fire protection, solid waste, or health facilities to serve the tourist and tourist facilities. Yeah, public restrooms, dressing rooms, parks, parking lots, tourist shuttle, transportation. It gets into some operation of visitor information center is another example of that. Again, that's just reading right out of state law, but that's the basic gist of it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. So we'll see the items down before you on the screen. Those were the original requested amounts, and just for the general public's knowledge, what we have, what we are proposing here is to take the fund balance of the state accommodations tax we had. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Cook. You're the professional here, and we take about 40% of our contingency fund, and we're funding all these projects in order to stimulate the Blythewood economy as soon as we possibly can.
Miss Mayor?
However, we're still looking at making sure that the funds are spent appropriately, that we still have receipts that are turned back in to see where the money has gone, and that there is a definite positive impact on the economy of Blythewood. Not just spending money for money's sake, but we're making sure there's an impact, that we're bringing people to Blythewood. We're trying to help the, the suffering small business owners, and we're trying to bring people into Blythewood to make it a recurring event, if possible, and successful. Mr. Cook, any other comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We're kind of lumping, you know, the state accommodation, the local accommodation, the hospitality, kind of in one discussion, but for purposes really of how the money's allocated and accounted for. You know, the state accommodation tax specifically to this budget, we're operating on what we have proposed to be coming up during this fiscal year, and also the carried over amount from last year, so we were fortunate to have some money to carry over. So the state accommodation tax for what we're proposing here, in this instance, is kind of standing on its own two feet, so to speak. We get into the local accommodations. We did the same thing. We did not appropriate any money from the fund balance for local accommodations. That'd be the next page. What we did with the hospitality revenue is when we had to appropriate from the fund balance a certain amount, and when we get to that page, I can kind of explain specifically how that's broken down, if you would like me to.
Okay, thank you, sir. I was talking in general terms, but I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
So the fund balance, what we've done is the excess that we carried over from year to year, some folks call it a contingency fund, some folks call it a rainy day fund. And what we're doing here is proposing that we pull 40% of that, which we'll discuss in just a few minutes, into funding all these items for the good of the economy in Blythewood. So thank you for the correction, Mr. Cook. Let's move to the next slide, if we don't have any other questions. Okay. All right, and then go ahead, Mr. Cook. Here we have the Tournament of Bands, the museum, and now Westwood High School is gonna create a tournament of bands for their level of high school band.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. Again, this, we're projecting, you know, approximately $43,177 available for potential allocation for those specific events. We would not, under the circumstance, appropriate anything from the fund balance. We do take care of 21% of our base payment for our bond for a park out of here, so of course we want to, you know, make sure we cover that. But even with a conservative estimate and taking, you know, to where we started out, you're taking, you know, over 10% off of what we started out with, this is the final number that we kind of came down to.
Okay, any questions, council members? All right, next slide.
All right. Now, the fun one, hospitality.
All right. And we'll see here, if you can magnify it, come on. All of us aren't that young, Mr. Cook.
So about as much as I could magnify.
No, you're good. That's good right there. Thank you.
Okay. So as you recall, this has two pages, so I'll just start briefly with this first page. Obviously, we're, we're based on the last time we met, you know, we're coming up short here in the sense of there are more folks asking for money out of, you know, potentially this funding source, and we're not bringing in as much this year for obvious reasons, and we usually take a good bit of this in any event to cover the, you know, some of the manor expenditures as well. So what we did, last year, we had $80,000 that was allocated, and basically from the appropriated from the fund balance, $80,000 was to do the fence and on I-77, basically the metal fence. That project is still out there in some form or fashion. As you may recall, that figure got up into well over a hundred thousand dollars. So we kind of backed up and funded, and we're kind of standing by for the next iteration of that. Maybe coming in with a lower dollar amount. But that eighty thousand dollars is out there in any event. So what we did is we took forty of that, in essence, from last year. And we are going to appropriate that towards the projects. As a side note, just a reminder, we also pay fifty-one percent of our base payment for the park bond out of this. That's a hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars, give or take. So that is, you know, obviously, an expense that we need to cover every year to meet our obligations. So when we do that, then you have some various other events that are in the regular expenditure that we see there. What I'm going to do now is get to the next page, just to kind of highlight this. These are some of the events that we talked about last time. I'll go down to the very bottom to start out with. I had some items down at the bottom that I had trying to cover out of the hospitality. But because of the lack of funds in hospitality, either we're not going to do the project, or we're going to cover the essential, you know, like front porch and steps, which is a safety issue, out of our capital improvements fund. So it's in there, it's just on another fund. So that's where that went. All the other events that you see before you on the screen come up to a hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars. Again, this is a budget, you know, not all of these have submitted allocations. It is something that we're just trying to project. Just a footnote to jump back real quick to the state accommodations part that we're talking about. Anybody that's looking to receive funds from state accommodations, and so again, a very specific fund, you have to go through a tourism expenditure review committee through the town. That's again, part of the state law. Mr. Hasterock, Steve Hasterock can kind of help you guide you to do that if you haven't done that before, which most of you have. But I'm just throwing that out as a footnote for anybody that may be listening. That is another state requirement you'll have to go through. Moving back to H-Tax, what we have to do to cover the full extent of these events is to appropriate out of our fund balance. Fund balance, you know, is just a good way to look at it as a savings account. It's, you know, currently, you know, as of today, I just printed out, we have four hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents in our hospitality account. We already made our bond payment for this year. We're fortunate in Blythewood that our sources of income are pretty stable. We aren't a big tourist attraction like Myrtle Beach. I think, you know, they're looking at some crazy millions, ten billions or so, you know, loss. We don't rely on tourism as much as a lot of places, so we're not taking a hit like a lot of places. We've also had good management of our funds through the years, so we've been able to maintain a good fund balance across the board, which is very unusual for a lot of places. Some of these towns in South Carolina are actually having to borrow money because of the funding sources that normally would come in form are coming in because of, you know, COVID-19. So we are many times and said fortunate to get that. So all that being said, here we are with the budget that we have. To cover these expenses before us today, we will ultimately have to have a hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars projected to come out of the appropriated from the fund balance. Again, forty of that was already in from last time, or technically, I guess eighty was, but forty, you know, were counted for there. So that's to make up the difference between what we had last time and what's before us today. So in essence, we're spending a little bit of our savings, to put it in, you know, simple terms. So that was a long-winded way to explain it, Mr. Mayor, but certainly happy to try to answer any questions.
All right, very nice. I appreciate it. Basically said the same thing I said ten minutes ago, but not as charismatically or as stupid as I did.
I'll take that.
So essentially, what we did is forty percent of that fund balance that we had on hand, we're now allocating in order to stimulate the economy in Blythewood. Is that a fair way to say it, Mr. Cook?
Yes, sir, correct.
And so the balance remaining, where is it, Ms. Julie?
A hundred and thirty-four, six, or in the checking account.
After, after all this is spent, let's say it is passed in June twenty-seven, June twenty-second, we would have how much on this in the fund balance?
Uh, we'll have about three hundred thousand.
Three hundred and twenty-eight, five hundred, somewhere around there, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. So about sixty percent of our rainy day fund, which is what we call it in my home, but would be left over. Okay, thank you. Questions from the council members? And, and let's see, no additions here. Okay, the next slide was the one with the okay, right here. And we spoke about every one of these in the past two meetings, however. The two that we added were the Camp Discovery bathrooms for fifteen thousand dollars, which all our school, recent school district two kids take field trips to Camp Discovery, technically right outside the boundaries of Blythewood, but all those folks live in Blythewood, and it's a service for their children. And I'm willing to entertain any comments about that. And then the Bethel-Hanbury Athletic Association, which sponsors a basketball, an annual basketball tournament at Blythewood High School, which draws teams from all over the state, which is what we love to see when we spend this money. And people come here, and some spend the night, and they spend their money here in downtown Blythewood. That all, and they also are leading the charge as the point organization for the town of Blythewood in the preservation of the historic gymnasium on Bethel-Hanbury campus, which would otherwise be torn down if this organization was not fighting to keep it intact. So a worthy cause, in my opinion, but I'll entertain any comments from the council members.
Mr. Mayor.
Please, Councilman Sloan Griffin.
I would like for Steve to give us a overview of these events based on factual documented proof on on the entirety of these events that we're looking at pulling rainy day funds.
Absolutely. Please, please ask your questions directly to him, Councilman Griffin. Go ahead.
Mr. Hassarock, can you kind of give us an overview? Just a short summary, kind of top to bottom on these events from the past?
Just these ones that were, we're looking at this page?
Yes.
Okay. Well, Big Red Barn, that's in their, they're in their third year. Their numbers, their attendance seems to be growing every year. The last two years, I've had some weather problems. They have a big headliner this year with John Anderson. So that, that's an event, that's just a one-day event. That's a concert, basically, and it hopefully will continue to grow each year. Rib Fest, I think we were all pretty familiar with the Rib Fest. We had a lot of people. I made some notes.
Mr. Hassarock, may I interject?
Sure.
The Big Red Barn will actually be a two-day, because I believe what they're trying to do is bring the the star in the day prior to meet fans.
Oh.
And do some evening event, and we'll talk about that later, but I did get a briefing on this and trying to bring them in on a, I think, the Friday night before, let fans come, get autographs, meet, take photos, and then the next day would be the something to jam, but okay, maybe a two-night, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Again, Rib Fest, we're pretty, we were pretty familiar with. We had a big crowd. It was a fun event. They're going to expand this year, or next year, actually, to sixty teams. Holiday Market, that supports our, our arts, our artisans and our craftsmen here in here in Blythewood. This year is going to be at Doca Manor. It's a three-day event. I think last year they had twelve or thirteen thousand dollars in retail sales. And about fifty percent of the attendees come from outside the Blythewood area. Black History Month, again, pretty familiar with that. We had a really huge crowd this year for Black History Month. The churches and the organizers really did a great job of putting together that program. Spring Market, if they do it, it'll be at Cobblestone. Bikes and Bears, not sure whether that's going to happen. We had, it was, it was a good event last year. Columbia is a kind of a bicycle-riding city, so we had about a hundred and seventy-five riders. They have not applied yet for any funds, so I don't know whether that will, will happen. Bravo Blythewood Concert Series. Again, I'm not sure if that's going to happen. We did four concerts last year. Some were better attended than others, but they did not get a lot of attendance outside of Blythewood. Bengal Boys Golf, that's, that's another nice event that really helps them out. That's the Columbia Country Club. I think they had, they have two or three hundred people and spectators with the, with the Boys Golf. The Big Grab, that's something to really think about. Officially, there is no sponsor, and really, there is, right now, there is no organization that's organizing the Big Grab. We work with Fairfield County Chamber to do a little advertising and marketing, but that is a big event. I think everybody, again, is familiar with the Big Grab. And we do have a lot of people on those two days for the Big Grab. What the town does, what I do for the town, I arrange all the traffic control, some, some of the trash pickup, and some of the, the porta-johns around town. So again, there is no official organization now that takes responsibility for the Big Grab. But it is a very large event, one of the largest as far as number of people. And when they do get some out-of-state people that do come and utilize some of the hotel rooms. Oktoberfest, again, that was a, a fun event. That one's going to grow. I think we'll have bigger attendance this year, as long as, as long as the weather holds up. Miss Blythewood Pageant, don't know if that's going to happen. We have not heard from Tracy Cooper about doing that again. Camp Discovery, I think that's the, the project that outlined the last time, and then the Bethel-Hanbury, what they're going to do. So most of the events on this page are kind of one or two days events, maybe not the, the Boys Golf and the the Big Grab. So that, that's kind of a very short synopsis of those that we fund out of hospitality. And, and, you know, they do help promote the local businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Hassarock.
You're quite welcome. My pleasure.
Mr. Hassarock.
Yes, sir.
On the Big Grab, has that date changed, or what is the date that they're planning?
I think it's the week after, second, Friday and Saturday, week after Labor Day. I think that's what they're shooting for.
Okay.
I would have to, the, the date really is chosen more by the Fairfield County Chamber of Commerce. But traditionally, I'm pretty sure it's the Friday and Saturday after Labor Day.
Pastor Rock.
Sir.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but did you not just say about five or so minutes ago that the Big Grab doesn't have an official organization that's running it?
That's correct. Well, if
Funds to an, to an event that doesn't have an organization that runs it?
Well, we
Advertising, putting our flyers out, our posters out.
Okay, who, who would that, who would that money go to? Who would be doing that? Would it be us as the town? Would it be the Fairfield Chamber, or would it be?
The Fairfield Chamber. We, they, they print off the, the rack cards. They also put up the website, so we pay, we pay them to do that. In previous years, at one time, the Chamber of Commerce, the Blythewood Chamber of Commerce worked to promote the, the Big Grab here, and I think before that, it was Bravo Blythewood. And then the Chamber took it over, and now we don't really have an official organization in Blythewood that, that helps promote the Big Grab. Unofficially, Liz over at the Simon Shop, she creates a Facebook page, and unofficially, she helps promote it, but nothing official.
Any other comments, council members?
Mr. Cook, let me ask you a question. How much of the rainy day fund did you say was being allocated to fully fund these events? Was, was it a hundred and thirty-four thousand approximately?
One thirty-four, six fifty-four.
Okay, we'll just do one thirty-four, six fifty. And Julie, what was our, what was our total balance at that time? It was four seventy-four approximately?
Our balance on June fifth, Brian has, our current numbers was four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Four sixty-eight.
Balance of today is four seventy-two, four sixty-one, twenty-eight.
All right, so that's about thirty percent then of the monies that would come out to, to true up all these events. Okay. And, and I just want to know for the record, just because we propose these allocations, these, all these organizations or representative from them have to come before us and officially request these funds. We are under no obligation to fund any event, even though it may, it is in our proposed budget.
Got a question for me, sir?
Yes, sir.
Depending, you're talking specifically about hospitality?
Yes, I'm talking about the screen I'm looking at right now. This is proposed allocations of fiscal year twenty-one hospitality funds.
So each organization would have to come before you and request and make, basically make their pitch.
But we, we could say yes to every single one of them, but on the flip side, we could say no to every single one of them.
Correct, and the budget itself, we put a asterisk in there, says tables for illustrative purposes only, you know, to be determined upon request. Correct me if I'm wrong, Steve. Traditionally, each organization has to appear before council with their ask and to make their requests. There about right, Steve?
Yes, but a, a lot of these on this list have already done that. We've had them as a discussion item in previous months.
He's talking overall. He's just talking overall.
Oh, yes, they have to submit an application, and it, it has to go before council.
So that's like the general framework of the way it works?
Yes, for, for H-Tax. Now, for SAT funds, the, the applicant has to go in front of our ATAX Committee. And the committee meets once or twice a year, depending on when we receive the applications. And then the committee makes a recommendation to town council. And the committee is, is made up of local business owners and local hotel owners and one at-large community liaison. That's, that's SAT.
But ATAX comes directly to us. They don't have to go before any committee.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Mr. Cook, question for you. If we are frugal of this money in the H-Tax, we can use this money to fund special projects like sports complexes, like acquiring land for sports complexes, acquiring land for a water park, some sort, kind of like some of the small municipalities like Hartsfield. If we're frugal with this money, we could use that money for what I would consider some sort of a major kickback to the community.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Basically, it's guided by section six-one, six dash one to seven thirty of state law, which outlines the revenue from local hospitality tax. But that is, you're bringing tourists, whether it be civic centers, aquariums, aquariums, you know, cultural recreation, historic facilities, and their other advertising promotion to related tourism development. To answer your question specifically, yes, as a, they have water park, for example, similar to one they did in Hartsfield, would qualify for that, you know, a baseball complex, lacrosse complex, you know, a museum. would qualify for that, uh you know, a uh baseball complex, lacrosse complex, um you know, a museum, you know, something along those lines uh that are tourism-related, tourism-centric and idea to bring people to town and to uh leave some money when they come into town, so.
Okay, and that just, okay, I'll reserve, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, great question. And uh our July monthly meeting, we're gonna have uh a discussion item to talk about long-term planning. We have some opportunities here to expand, to buy some property and and get creative ideas like this on the table. And I'm glad you brought that up, Councilman Sloane Griffin, because we do need to talk about it. I don't want to load up the June meeting because we have to do this and the rezoning, but we'll talk about it in July. Uh certainly, you don't want to hold the money. Uh past two years, you get yourself in trouble, you're supposed to get extensions from the state. So what we want to do is make sure we're allocating uh the money properly and we're providing a service for our citizens, so great point. Any other questions about these? Those of us who've been here a while know all of these organizations would not be on the recurring list if they did not provide that bang for the buck. Uh back when I was a council member, we used to divide the money spent by the number of people that showed up from outside of town. And all of these organizations really do a great job of drawing people in. All right, Mr. Cook, next slide, I think that's the last one.
So basically, the uh just continuing on just briefly, the Docomand revenue expenditures are the same as last time, um same with capital improvement. So really, the only thing we kind of finesse were what we had talked about today.
Okay. So great review, any concerns, council members? About what we're trying to do, anybody not agree with the direction we're going in? Spend some of this money to stimulate the economic development here in Blythewood, since we just went through a kind of a tragic period for small businesses. And thank God, they all survived. I mean, I know many of us are still eating at them and taking eating, you know, at the restaurants and calling in food and picking it up. Uh those were tough times, I would not want to be a restaurant owner over the last six months, that's for sure. So uh we gotta do our part to help them out and all other businesses as well. Any other comments before we move on? Everybody's satisfied with what we're doing here. So now we gotta move to the action item tonight, the park events. And what we're referring to here is not only the July fourth, do we want to do our fireworks display and how do we control it? Uh what we want to do is talk about, there are people, and I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Hesar Rock in a second, organizations requesting to lease the amphitheater because they're ready to get out in front of this like we are, open up the park, have concerts. But at what level do we do that? And how cautious are we as a uh as a Town Council? So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hesar.
Uh yes, thank you. Uh we have a lot of requests, uh use the amphitheater, rent the amphitheater, uh really starting in June. Um I I just got a request from Don Russo at Freeway Music to do a small play uh on the amphitheater next week, next Saturday. He wants to use amphitheater Thursday, Friday for um for rehearsal. It's about nine children, uh be the for the actual play, uh fifty to a hundred people next Saturday. Uh Tri- Trippy, Trippy at uh uh McNulty's wants to do once a month a concert, uh uh working with uh Chris Kraut, uh Chris and Tony over at Doco Smoke. Uh we have a uh our July third event uh coming up very soon. Uh I have a request for August eighth for a uh five oh one C three called T three to do a jazz concert, five hundred to a thousand people. Uh they will have Terrence and also Dante, they are um Emmy award-winning uh a jazz artist uh from the Colombian Blythewood area. Uh the churches, Forward City Church, wants to do a concert. Uh we have the Big Red Barn uh concert in September. Camp, uh somebody wants to do a charity event for Camp Chemo in in uh September. And we have Oktoberfest, we have Ve- Veterans Day uh proposal from the from the um Historical Society and a and a large charity walk by sister for cystic fibrosis uh in November. So these are just some of the large events that are being proposed. Uh I constantly get calls for people to do small things in the park, a birthday party, marriage uh ceremony, uh even a business meeting sitting on the amphitheater. So uh uh the amphitheater in the park uh are in demand and people are asking for us to open it up.
Okay, council members, before you, so there are people who need to spend money, they need to advertise, they need to let other folks know that their events are coming up. So we need to discuss and take action tonight on when we open it, when we allow it to happen. Any safeguards that are required? Any comments?
What are our limitations right now, Mr. Mayor?
Well, obviously, we are abiding by the governor's task force and his uh executive orders. So fifty percent capacity inside a building, uh outside is open. However, you're not supposed to congregate in groups. I mean, we can get all of those definitely in writing, those are the ones I recall right off the top of my head, looking at them. So you have a concert, if you have a play, Ms. Hesar, did they say uh approximately how many people they anticipated for an audience?
Fifty, fifty to one hundred.
Okay, so that would be easily manageable. However, if you had a large concert and a very popular musician, you might have two or three thousand, which would be more more difficult.
That's correct.
Okay, so this, and this is a, did you say high school, I'm sorry, Mr. Hesar, a high school play or a middle school play?
Uh, well, Don Russo.
Okay.
One, I I think it's it's younger children.
Yeah, it's that age group, middle to high school.
Yeah, originally, it was supposed to be in May at the high school.
Right.
Yeah.
So personally, I mean, that one seems pretty benign to me. Uh I need your thoughts on it. And then the larger concerts will draw quite a crowd. I'm quite.
I made some call, I I made some calls today from other vent to other venues like uh the Lexington Ice House Amphitheater, uh and they are still closed. The only thing they're doing is a farmer's market. Uh Walker Brewer, who runs that uh amphitheater, said the town, city of Lexington attorneys has interpreted that an amphitheater is a concert venue, a concert venue. And under the uh uh the the direction of the governor, concert venues are not open. Also, uh John and my assistant talked to Cherry Park and Rock Hill, uh they are not having any events. Uh Saluda Shoals, no park events, no gatherings, they're not even letting people rent the picnic shelters. Uh Sesquicentennial, uh they only have two sh- shelters open, no more than fifty people. So, you know, it we're in a difficult situation here, but it appears right now that a a lot of uh parks are still not comfortable with large gatherings. Uh and if you read what's happening in the paper, you know, we all know that the cases are going up uh because of testing and things like that. And the number, uh there's really, the governor was on on today and everybody reiterates, there's two ways to control the COVID exposure, one is to wear masks and the other is social distancing. Uh and when you have a large event in our park, uh it will be difficult to to in- ensure that that happens. Uh and then for events that are organized by other groups, where does the onus fall? Is it our responsibility or is it their responsibility? Uh so again, it's a it's a difficult issue uh uh to deal with. I know everybody wants these events, we want to open up park, we want to bring people into Blythewood. Uh uh I I give you an example, what I did was I took the number of cases in South Carolina and the number of projected cases, and I think it's about a hundred and eight thousand now. And if you divide that by the number of people in Bly- in in uh South Carolina, which is five million, that's about a two point one one per thousand infection rate. So if you have two thousand to three thousand people in the park, the statistical probability is that about twenty-one people per thousand uh will be infected. So when when I when I look at risk management and to try and figure out, you know, how to make some of these things work, it really is a numbers game and un- unfortunately, uh uh people are not social distancing and they're not wearing masks. And I'm sorry, that's just kind of reality of my situation. So, like I said, it's a very, very difficult decision.
Absolutely, well-stated, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
So as as far as timeline goes, we're talking about next weekend as the first event, is that correct?
That's correct, that would be, yeah.
And then we're talking the next large event would be, did you say the twenty-eighth of June or twenty-seventh of June for?
Well, Trippy wanted to hit, Trippy wanted to do twenty-seventh of June, I don't know in this short timeframe, can he pull it off? He wants to book once a month.
But then the next one after that would be eight August?
Correct.
Okay, you don't have anything between twenty-seven June and except for our.
Except for fourth of July, right. Uh that that I know of now, I mean, you know, people, people call me, uh there's uh yeah, two or three events in uh August, September and October are heavy with big events.
Okay. All right, so we need to deal with the near-term battle here, twenty-seven, uh this coming weekend, twenty-seven June, three July. We kind of already approved fireworks, but not the control mechanism. So council members' remarks.
Question, Mr. Hes- Mr. Mayor, question. Uh, Mr. Hesar Rock, on those locations that you spoke to, um did you inquire with them about when they are starting to book? Because there are venues that including travel industry and things like that that are starting to let you book August on. So did you ask them that type of a question?
Yeah, yeah, we did. Now, uh uh Walker Brewer at Ice House Amphitheater, uh he didn't really, he didn't really know because he was uh uh his decision is going to be based on when the governor decides to open up concert venues. Uh the other parks, uh like Cherry Park and Rock Hill, um they said August or September, but they weren't really sure. And uh uh that's kind of the feeling that I get from from these other venues, August, September, but it's also going to be based on uh what's happening with the COVID uh virus itself. Are we going to see a flare up? Is it going to die down? It's gonna level off, so uh they don't really know. They don't have a target date on when they'll be open.
And those numbers that the statistics that you brought up, where did those statistics come from?
Well, you mean, the uh the infection rate and and and.
Yes, sir.
That was, that came from the newspaper, such as article in in uh yesterday's newspaper.
Was those de-hack numbers?
Uh. Yes, de-hack number.
Okay.
This article said, state, this is from yesterday, statewide health officials have identified fourteen thousand eight hundred cases. Um and then later on, uh yeah, and then I think the latest number from today was over fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand.
No, sir, not not the positive cases, the cases, the ratio that you gave like a a twenty-one person ratio per thousand. I'm familiar with those numbers that you're reading, the one that you came up with twenty-one persons to a thousand. Was those de-hit calculated numbers?
No, that was, that was my calculation, taking the number of cases, you know, the uh plus the number of uh well, it says just right here, Monday, officials estimated that in all, hundred and five thousand seven hundred people have contracted the virus. Uh this is um.
Got.
Yeah, and then you divide that, you divide that by the the total population in South Carolina.
Yeah, I I just want us to make sure that, and just for the record for council, be careful with numbers like that because um if you guys were on with Dr. Traska, he explained those estimate numbers and they're using nine, for every one case, there's nine people. So be careful with the assumptions of creating numbers on your own. And those estimates that they're put out is based on the number nine. And that's just their assumption by their authority that they have in the state. So we have to be careful not to give a uh uh numbers that we're not in the business to give um on that. Um that's all the questions I got right now, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Please, Councilman Griffin.
Uh based on the uh the conference today by the governor and listening to Dr. Bell, uh she said that this is probably the worst, she's more afraid or fearful now at this particular time than she's ever been about COVID nineteen. And that is because we continue to have uh a a spike. Um, South Carolina itself is one of the nineteen states that has a spike across the country. Now, with that being said, um I want to go back and ask uh Mr. Hesar. Is each one of these events that's coming in in the park, they still have to come up with liability insurance, correct?
Uh, yes, yes. That that is one of our requirements, that they have to have liability insurance. And they can, most of your uh uh events or your five oh one C threes, they have their own insurance that covers an outside event, uh like the jazz concert, that's a five oh one C three called T three. I I guess the question would be, would their liability insurance cover, you know, and anything? You know, if if somebody claimed they went to their concert and got infected, that I don't know.
Right, that's not our concern.
But that, well, before before I go there, I wanted to ask uh Mr. Meggs, um based on our insurance policy, uh whether or not they get it or we get it, how does that affect us in the event of a situation like uh Mr. Hesar Rock just presented? So, Mr. Meggs, can you give me any clearance on that?
Well, I'm here and I can tell you that uh this is all new ground. So uh we just have to uh play it as close as we can to what the uh governor is uh prescribing and and um let the insurance company deal with it. And we, you know, we may, there may be some exclusion that we're not uh familiar with. I don't have the policy in front of me and uh these are unprecedented times. So we just have to do what we think is uh reasonable under the circumstances. Right, which hearkens me back, you like that word? Back to the waiver, Mr. Hesar Rock, did we develop a waiver for folks to sign?
Uh, we did not, we have, we have.
That's fine, I'm just not throwing mud here. I just won't, you know, people come in, these are unprecedented times, to quote a great man, Jim Meggs, and to say that sign a waiver stating you understand that it it is a possibility that this is out here and that you choose of your own accord to use this facility and that you have your own insurance. Something simple like that, I mean. Well, Mayor, there, Mayor, there is a, there is a logistical problem presented by that. And that is, you know, how do you corral all the attendees and get them to come through a central location and sign some kind of waiver that may or may not uh uh pass?
A central location and sign some kind of waiver that may or may not, uh, pass muster on the law. We do, we, we've got a form. Uh, that we can modify for this, uh, and Steve and I have talked about that several weeks ago, but, um. Uh, it, it, you know, this is, uh, this is un, untried territory.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Now, I think what you just spoke of would apply to like our July third celebration. Where we're responsible for everybody coming in there, but I'm referring to someone having a private concert or this school play. They sign one waiver saying they understand they're using our facility, but we're not liable for any. You know, COVID nineteen, things that you can waive. I know under tort law, you can't waive safety and railing and bathroom safety and all that. However, you can say, if you bring people here and you rent our facility, you have to have your own insurance policy. Is that correct?
Well, uh, if, yeah, if we can get them to, uh, provide such insurance and, uh. And of course, uh, the, the individual. Attendees in those circumstances would be first looking towards the, uh, uh, the promoter of the event, but. Um, it, it, you know, these are, the, logistically is very difficult and I, I certainly wouldn't want to be in. Uh, Mr. Hasarock's position trying to, uh, uh, traffic cop all this, uh, paper flow and so forth. Sure. But I, I think the best thing we can do is stick with, uh, uh, what the, uh. Governor and the D heck officials are, are dictating. And, uh, after that, we just have to, uh, see how, see how it falls out.
Question.
Go ahead, please, Councilman Griffin.
So, um, just to kind of give a few updates and I'm waiting on a confirmation text message from a colleague. Um, so, I mean, I, I asked this question to Dr. Cosca. Um, Mr. Administrator Cook was on the line, uh, with that about lawsuits. Have he heard about any lawsuits of such? And, uh, he hasn't, um, heard of any lawsuits, um, yeah, um, of such. And it's kind of, he kind of had the impression that's, you know. His words are basically, you know, people can sue for anything, but you know, that's something that, you know, we, we really. Not in the weeds on the D heck is certainly not even, not worried about that. That's not hindering any of their recommendations or anything like that. Uh, because of that, that theory based on that you can be sued for anything, um, at any time. Um, but I, I do want, you know, we did bring that up about a waiver process. Um, way back when we first issued our own emergency order, um, for the town. And that is something that I do think is needed, um, for the manor internally, especially right now because. Uh, you can do events inside the manor. Um, but I do want to kind of, uh, give a catchall to this conversation to kind of. Speed up all of our time and I know my elder Griffin would enjoy that. Um, all concert venues, theaters and performance art centers are still closed by the governor. Uh, so we will have to abide by that order, um, as such has been extended today for an additional fifteen days. Um, keep in mind, Mr. Hasarock, that's why I asked about future planning. Um, um, I personally been a part of, of the group for, um, almost a hundred days. I feel. I mean, by the verbiage of the governor today, I feel that, um, it won't renew after July one. Um, for several reasons, uh, July one state is really looking at bringing all state employees back to work. Uh, July one. So, um, this is not just affecting business, it's affecting the business of the state. And, um, you know, we can pull and pull, um, bullet statements out of everybody's statement. Uh. That sits on that panel with the governor, uh, but his verbiage is, you know, the economy is hurting, um, you know, and as long as other. Places and establishments of businesses stay closed, um, you know, July one, that extra six hundred dollars go away. Uh, that was told to us in our task force by, uh, Drew, um, that, that money will go away. So. That's why I said they're playing ahead of July one to be safe because when that six hundred dollars go away. That's really going to affect the bottom line of the economy, um, for, um, folks that's still technically out of work. So, but to sum it up. We can't do anything by governor's order, uh, regardless at this point for July.
Or for June, you mean?
Yeah, I'm sorry, June.
Yeah, right. Okay. Yes, sir. And thank you for that. So that answers it, Mr. Hasarock. The twenty seventh would be a no-go. The twenty, the third of July would still be a pending action, which we will talk about on the twenty second of June at our regular monthly meeting. So any other questions about that?
Um, I'm going to add something.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
You know, we have an abundant amount of PPE stock. Um, you know, that we have now in the town, um, and you, you know, you still can get more. I urge us to stockpile as the state is starting to restock and stockpile on different PPEs and, and things of that sort. Um, just how you have been doing for events at the manor, um, having those masks and gloves out there. And it's a choice and we're checking temperatures and things like that. Um, we're going to have to continue to follow those guidelines. That's only safe practice that, you know, we can do and, um, as moving forward. So. Even when we get to the large outside venues, if, um, you know, we have stations with masks and sanitizer. We have people checking, you know, and, and for outside venue like the park, we really need to start thinking about some form of a wristband. That, that, you know, your, your temperature takers can walk in. Once they verify a person's temperature. They have a wristband on, so you, you can continue that because we are in the open park and it is hard to kind of. Corral people into one central point of coming in. So I'm just giving that idea out there and that just ran through my head, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you, sir. And just a point here for the, the good of the public, we're, we're not concerned with liability issues and being scared. We want the public to come out and enjoy the park. We want people, if they choose to, as consenting adults, to come to events, to come to them. If you don't feel safe, don't. But we're concerned mainly with the, the employees, the folks working, the events. And making sure that liability is covered in case there's an issue where a person is hurt, injured, uh, or contracts the virus, that they have an outlet. To get relieved, to seek relief. And I, and I think that's important to mention. And we're not running scared. We want to do these things, but we're going to follow the gu- the governor and his professional, his health staff. We don't have one in Blythewood. But he has a public health staff who makes these assessments. They're doing a great job and we want to abide by those issues. Any other comments, council members? So the twenty seventh of June is a no-go and the third of July is pending. On our meeting in, uh, the twenty second of June, if that's okay with the council members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please, go ahead.
So the entire month of June is, is no.
Uh, based on what Councilman Griffin just said, the governor's order.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, if, I'm sorry, but it just, it seems, it seems folly to even have a conversation about having an event. If we're going to have to have people sitting there checking temperatures, that just seems absolutely ludicrous. If we're that concerned about it, then that answers our question and the answer is no. We, we don't have the event. Um, I, I'm an event promoter. I run the Comic Con downtown. I've canceled my event. It's an indoor event. I understand it's different than an outdoor event, but we estimate between eight and ten thousand people come to our event over two days. I had no choice, I felt, but to cancel. I couldn't possibly sit people outside for two and three hours at a time, checking temperatures in a long line. Waiting to get in indoors. And I think that it would, the same principles would apply getting into the park. I think if, if we, if we're really at the point where we feel like we have to check temperatures and you have to set up hand sanitizing stations. While all those things are great ideas, it just, it answers our question that we're not ready or society's not ready for that type of event, for that number of people. Furthermore, um, we have to carry private event insurance and I've spoken to several underwriters and they would not write policies for large groups. They just would not take the risk. Um, I don't exactly know how you could ever prove that someone contracted it at your event. Maybe if there was a mass breakout, possibly. But even still. You know, with cases increasing, I think that, I think that the writing is on the wall that, that, you know, June's closed. If July is a maybe and we're talking about July third, I mean, we're three days outside of June. I think that answers our question that, that the red, white and blue, as much as I enjoy it as the next person. It's just, it would not be a wise move at this point. And that's, and that's my, uh, that's my soapbox and I'll step off.
Fine. Thank you. Great input. We appreciate it. Any other comments?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I need to ask a question here.
Uh.
Uh. If we were to do the July third event, are we saying that our decision is only to do the fireworks? We have not officially said that because I have all these food vendors in the bands. Who are, have been constantly asking me, what are we doing? And, and I, you know, I got, we, I got to tell them now.
Right. Well, I believe our last meeting was that we moved forward to go with fireworks only with no food vendors and no music. Am I, am I incorrect? Anybody correct me? I thought that's what we said last time.
That's what I remember.
Yep. And indoor events comply with the governor's order and that's different from concert events that.
Yes.
Long Griffin just mentioned. Indoor, you can go to fifty percent capacity, wear masks, stay separate. If you have food, someone has to serve it. It can't be open buffet. However, outdoor amphitheater concert type events, which we're describing here tonight, are a no-go until the governor lifts that order. So that's where I stand. Am I incorrect? Anybody correct me?
No, sir, you go. That's correct.
And then that raises a very interesting point. If we have to make a decision right now, based on the information that we have right now. Then that answers your question and the answer would be no for the.
But we don't. We already, we already gave the guidance to prepare for the fireworks. That's it.
Okay, prepare mean, prepare means what? Purchase them only?
Yes.
They use them?
And we did that. We already have them. We've acquired them.
Okay, but, but, but you, but you accept the fact that would they may sit and gather dust for a year though?
If they could.
Okay, that, that's fair enough.
That was, yeah.
But I, Mr. Mayor, I, Mr. Mayor.
Please, go ahead.
I thought, I thought that we would do, we're doing a stay in your car event. We're not doing everything like is normal, right?
You're exactly right. Based on our last conversation, if we want to change that on the twenty second of June, we can change that. You're exactly right. But we recommended people stay in their car. If somebody's going to get out, we said you can't control that. But at least people go sit on a towel and stay six feet apart or what have you. So we were in that conversation and we'll get into it. On the twenty second of June in depth to make sure we have the rules in place. Uh, we have, that we already asked for the deputies. Uh, Riston County Sheriff's Department, uh, for the, uh, off-duty deputies to come work the event. Is that correct, Mr. Hasarock?
Yes, sir. I have put in the applications and I've talked to Officer Flowers. And, uh, she said she would work very hard to get us the amount of deputies that I had requested. Uh, I, I do have to kind of throw a monkey in the wrench here. Uh, if the governor's order says till July first. And we're talking about a July third fireworks. Normally we do our marketing through the newspapers a month before the event. So. And I mean, we certainly can, you know, can have the event, though I guess technically. Do we do any marketing or, or, you know, in the, in the local newspapers on, on our websites? I mean, how do you, how do you kind of frame that?
Right, yeah. This is not a traditional Fourth of July celebration. Word of mouth has already gone out. All my neighbors know that we've said we were going to shoot fireworks and that was it. Which, by the way, most of them very positive about that. Uh, I don't know if they're going to go. They just said, I'm glad y'all are doing that, you know, as a town to keep, keep going. Let's get out there. Let's not be afraid. But they also understand that people, again, consenting adults, you don't have to go. If you, if you feel nervous, you feel that there's going to be a crowd, you don't want to park in a parking space in your car with other people around you, that's fine. Don't go. I wish we had our own cable TV station. I might've said this last meeting, like Riston County does, and we could televise the fireworks, but unfortunately we don't. So maybe one day we will, but right now, so if people want to come and just sit in their car, like Councilman Sloane Griffin recommended. Just like we did church services not too long ago. I don't know if y'all remember. My family did Easter service in our vehicle in a field. Turned, tuned the radio station to a certain channel and then we saw it was wonderful. And then we all drove off. Everybody was safe. And we had our religious needs met. Same with the fireworks. People want to observe it, you know, why should we not celebrate the birth of this nation, especially? In such a critical time as now, when people need to come together and we need to celebrate unity as a nation. I would not want to turn that off. I would want to use this as a time to celebrate and to bring together people of all diverse walks and natures. To, uh, not be afraid to come out and to see fireworks. So that's where I stand on it. Uh, any council member remarks?
Make a quick remark, just, um, FYI. If my information I got here is correct, that new order will expire on the twenty sixth of this month. So, you know, just kind of a FYI, you know, during our week of our meeting, it will sometime that week come out. Either it's going to be renewed or it's going away. It's always a possibility.
That's a great point. So then I put before you, council member, should we move our monthly meeting from the twenty second? To either the twenty sixth or the day after the twenty sixth. I'm not looking at my calendar. I don't know.
The twenty ninth is the, uh, twenty sixth is a Friday.
Okay.
Twenty ninth is Monday.
Okay, well, I would recommend we move our monthly meeting to that day. So we'll have positive guidance either way. Unless you have objections. So we'll know. Otherwise, we're voting in the dark to do something on July third and then we find out the governor said no. Cause if that's okay with, or, you know, plus or minus a day or two. It doesn't have to be exactly that day and we'll send emails out and get times and publish it, obviously. Mr. Cook, does that sound feasible?
June twenty ninth instead of June twenty second, works remain.
Okay. And that way we can publicize it and, um, make sure the public is welcome to join us. But I certainly want to walk into that with a definitive answer as opposed to not knowing. Any questions? Somebody had a question.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, is that proposed meeting an in-person meeting at the manor?
That's a great question. I thought we were going to meet in person on the twenty second, but we can certainly, uh, do it just like this. What do you say? What do you recommend, Councilman Griffin?
I, I, I'm of the opinion that if we can have an in-person meeting, I am in favor of that. Even if I have to wear the mask, which I do not like to do.
Well, that's fine. Um, well, the governor's going to make a comment on the twenty sixth and we'll know going into the twenty ninth. What the policy now is. And we know he's already allowed people to indoor events at fifty percent capacity. So we come in, wear a mask if you so choose, sit six feet apart.
Mr. Hasarock, what's the capacity of the manor if we open up all the floating walls?
Well, I, I'm, I'm right now, I've, I've dropped it down to twenty five percent. And which is, puts us depending on how you lay out the entire ballroom, about a hundred and fifteen people. Uh, but that's with the tables being eight feet apart and six chairs per table. Now, by setting up town council where, where the town council members have to sit. Six feet apart and also everybody in the audience should sit six feet apart. Um. I, I'm going to have to try and figure that out. But we certainly would have enough room to do the town council meeting. But you may have a lot of, a really long tables there to get everybody, you know, in a, in, in six feet apart. Uh, but we, we could do it unless, unless the audience was fifty or sixty, you know, attendees or something like that. That might be difficult to do.
Well, then it, it would seem to me that it would, that people would be admitted on a first come, first served basis if that was the case.
Well, yes, what we, we just had two meetings yesterday. Uh, uh, we had the chamber breakfast and then Gretchen Baron had a, a little, uh, uh, voting watch. Uh, event last night, uh, and, and, uh, we did. Uh, and, and, uh, we did position all the tables eight feet apart. We took everybody's temperatures and we provided masks and sanitizer and gloves to anybody who wanted. But, you know, a town council layout for a meeting is different than like the chamber meeting where people were sitting at round table. So, yeah, it's, it's gonna depend on, on how many people really would, we, we can put out an X amount of number of chairs for the audience. And then when we run out, then, you know, that, that's all we can do. That's our, that's our max capacity.
Makes sense. Yes. Kind of like the debates we do. Yeah. Anyway, Mr. Cook?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing to consider too, on the, uh, June 22nd meeting, that's the date we advertise for the public hearing, uh, for our budget. So we'd kind of have to stick to that date. Melissa reminded me of that and that's a very good point.
Right.
So, you know, 22nd June is what we advertise for a public hearing.
So we'll need us.
So, you know, nothing to say we could have a meeting on the 29th as well, but we need to stick.
We're gonna have to decide. I, I mean, do you all concur? Yeah. I mean, you gotta see what the governor's gonna say. If he says no, you're still not congregating in open air areas, then we can't do the. So we gotta, I mean, we can, well, we can do it another way. I can listen to the governor and I can call Mr. Cook and Steve and say no fireworks, but. But, um, go ahead.
Yeah. So just FYI, it would be, um, the 24th. If anything comes out on that, um, the order expires on the 26th. If it changes, uh, we only doing Wednesday meetings now. So just FYI. You muted, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, sorry. So 24th, not the 26th will be the
Yeah, the 26th is when the order expires.
I think.
And, yeah, he's not gonna do it on that day. If it's anything, if we only on Wednesdays now, like today, that's the only day we actually meet like that now. It's not an everyday thing like it was in the beginning.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
Well, Mr. Cook, we need to have a meeting, if nothing more, to address the budget at a minimum on the 22nd.
That's correct. Since that's the public hearing, we had advertised that date far in advance. So, you know, we definitely need to be on the 22nd for the second reading, which would be the public hearing for our budget.
Right. As, as the rezoning also time sensitive where we have to meet on that day for the same purpose?
Uh, I mean, it'd be easy enough to second reading on that. So it's, it's, I don't see any big issue with, with that coming up.
Good. All right.
Mr. Mayor, if, if we so choo- choose to, we could call a special meeting for the 29th to address.
Yeah, that's what we're saying. We're gonna have to do that because you gotta give the staff guidance on, we're gonna set it up and shoot it off or not. Yeah.
10-4.
Gotcha. And that's a great point. So what, the 29th is a Monday, we said.
Yep.
Correct.
So we'll still have an opportunity to advertise at least one printing of The Voice and Chronicle before July 4th.
Uh, well, normally they
I know, but I can, yeah, we can work it out. They, they work with us. They're great. Okay.
Just have to, you know, let them know that it's coming.
Right. But the question is, will have or will not have fireworks? It's gonna be the only change on the ad that we put. Yeah. Okay.
We'll run big full page ad.
Yeah, sure. All right. Okay. Any other questions or comments? So we had it as an action item. So is there a necessity to pass a voice vote on any issue we just spoke of? Or do we use it as staff guidance to cancel the event on the end of the month?
Thinking that we had it as an action item, I don't know that you necessarily, because a lot of moving parts there, just guidance for staff and, you know.
Okay. Well, now we'll, any other questions about this? So I think we're, understand where we are now. Proceeding with caution, but working hard to get things back open as safely as possible. All right. Moving to open citizen comment. Do we hear any?
Mayor, on the YouTube feed, it, it's my understanding that Mr. Fry would like to speak.
Okay, that's fine. Mr. Fry, are you there?
He's not. He'd have to call in. Uh, there's several comments on, uh, YouTube if, uh, you'd like, Mr. Mayor, for me just to kind of get him there.
Please do. Go ahead.
Quite a few here, so. From, uh, Jay Michael Ross. Basically asking, um, giving, um, I'll just read it specifically. It says, I'm all for that slum, but I don't see how we can give that much to Community Keys, but only a thousand for mental health issues operating right around the corner from Town Hall. So that was one comment. Another comment, same person, great strategy. Get back to left here money from the past years to fund these events. Uh, the businesses have never needed more in their town, uh, that will next few months. Uh, the chamber, Phil Fry would like to speak during open citizen comment. And, uh,
Mr. Cook, what would be the number that he would need to call in?
So we would have needed to have a, a meeting invite first, but if he wants to stand by, I can send that to him.
I sent him one this morning.
So to send him like his email from this morning, it should be there. Uh, continuing on just with this, uh, again, from Mr. Ross, uh, they could get into the YouTube link at six, uh, ask if Bravo Blythewood is planning a concert series for 20, uh, for the year 2020 or 2021. Uh, 15,000 didn't do it this year. I also asked about this Blythewood pageant that they're probably not gonna, uh, either. Uh, Blythewood Chamber said Big Grab, not funded by Fairfield Chamber.
Wait, wait, you're getting, you're getting way ahead of it. Let's go back. Let's address them one at a time. Did we miss a request from the Stonehouse Ministries? I know we're a donor every year for a thousand dollars. Did they request any more money?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we can, we can wait and former Mayor Ross can come speak to the council and then we'll discuss future funding for that. So I just want to address them one at a time. If that's okay with the council. Okay. What was the next issue? I don't want to get too far behind on the issues and not have answers for these folks.
Okay. Well, I, I guess I could go back. I was kind of rolling through. Didn't know you wanted to comment on each one, but basically questioned the Community Keys, why are they getting more than a thousand dollars?
Okay. And then Councilman Griffin spoke about the events. You want to refresh that again, Councilman Griffin, just in case somebody didn't hear? The events they're, you're gonna, the organization's gonna do in Blythewood?
Yeah, sure. I'll keep it simple. And, um, to the public out there, you can contact me, um, through multiple links, uh, for further detail and questioning on this, but, um, quick highlight. And we're gonna work on, um, playground equipment, making it accessible, um, for disability, um, like handy, uh, wheelchair accessibility and, and other, um, disabled needs. And we're looking at doing a, uh, special needs, um, prom, um, that's using, um, different color headsets, um, that is, um, ran by, uh, um, doctors, psychiatrists of those sort for that. And then a culinary arts program, um, that will, um, get the kids stimulated in learning, um, how to cook or that interested kid in wanting to be a chef. Um, they have a lot more programs they can offer. Um, I'd be more than willing to talk and work with the public or anyone that, um, had that question. Thank you. Just keeping it short. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you for clarifying again. But, uh, Mr. Hesron, we could potentially do something inside the manor, right? Don't you? Yeah. See, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Okay. So that's kind of the, it's a brand new funding, uh, request, uh, seems to have a benefit for our local children. Um, and that's why we've got it on the budget to answer any questions. Mr. Cook, what was the next question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, again, uh, you know, Mr. Mayor Ross just said, you know, good job, basically spending this money for these businesses that they definitely need it like no other time. Um, again, Mr. Fry, um, wants to get in on the meeting. So, uh, Mayor Ross did ask a question about Bravo Blythewood. And there's planning a concert for this coming up year. Do you have any other information on that, Steve, on that end of this Blythewood pageant?
Uh, none at all, really. We, we have not had any formal requests. I, I don't really know, um, uh, what the status is of Bravo Blythewood. I, I'm pretty sure that Martha Jones is retired from it. So I, I really don't know.
Okay. Good enough. Uh, just a comment from the chamber of Blythewood, uh, Big Grab, uh, is not funded by the Fairfield Chamber to their knowledge. Mayor Ross asked again about what money would you use to pay for the upkeep and sustain the water parks and other events or venues?
Can I, can I answer that, Mr. Mayor?
Please do. As long as we can provide clarity to our citizens. Absolutely. Go ahead.
So, um, uh, to, uh, former Mayor Ross, um, I, I think it's kind of simple. If you look at the Hartsful, um, model, um, and their water park, their water park is called Neptune Island. Uh, Google it. And I think that would be a wonderful, um, addition to Blythewood, a very smart addition to Blythewood, um, to have something of that sort here, um, for the families. I mean, we, we have more and more families moving into Blythewood. Um, and the kids and children, adults would love to take part in that, um, to fund that. Um, Hartsful, um, their water park is owned by the city of Harts. Um, they do admission fee for it. Um, there is a reduced admission fee for folks that live in the city of Hartsful. Um, you can also buy a, I'm looking at it now. You can buy a season pass with unlimited access to the water park. You get 10% off the cabanas, a doll off rental lockers, 10% off food and beverage. Um, you could buy a season pass there for $65.99. Um, so unlimited access. So, um, when you get a free moment, all the citizens out there, look up Neptune Island, um, City of Hartsful, um, Water Park. I think that'd be a great smart addition to Blythewood. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Slone Griffin, wouldn't it be fair to say that it's essentially like Care Wins?
Yeah.
A water park versus a roller coaster park?
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't, I mean, yeah, same concept. I think, you know, combining a water park with sports field. Um, I think that's something that, you know, will leave a mark, um, on Blythewood and, and create another revenue driver uh, for our local, um, town. Um, that will, now we talk about tourism and age tax money. Uh, it, that's not, that's a no-brainer science. That's gonna bring in people from godly different locations. That's gonna bring school buses in here, summer camps in here. Um, it would never be a dull moment at that water park unless it was a tsunami of rain for a week. So, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Brock.
Okay. Any other comments? Next comment, Mr. Cook? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. No problem. Um, rescinding the, uh, invitation to the chamber just in case they didn't find it here. So it's, uh, on the way. If they don't already have it. Uh, comments, uh, getting back to that, uh, the Blythewood Chamber talking about liability insurance. The, the chamber has general liability, but they purchase special event insurance for their events, uh, when they have them at Doca Meadows. Uh, Chamber has general liability insurance. And they go on to talk about that. A message from, um, Mayor Keith Bailey. Playground was included in the original park plan. Uh, and he made that comment that it would be easy to make that happen because it was part of the original park plan. So I don't have any other comments in my email. Uh, those were all the comments that we had for now off of YouTube and Mr. Fry is, um,
I can call him here and see.
Okay. Yep. I don't see him standing by the waiting room or anything for
He informed me, Mr. Cook, that he was gonna send out emails if he was not able to get in.
Say again, I'm sorry?
He was going to send out emails if he was unable to get into the call.
Okay. Uh, sent him the link, um, if he wants to try that. I just sent it probably five minutes ago, but.
Yeah.
Apparently his call.
He could also use the 1-800 number or the different numbers at the box. Mr. Mayor, you muted.
Still muted, Mr. Mayor.
I know, but did you, you just sent it to Mr. Fry on email? Is that correct? I got him on the phone now.
I did. Yes, sir.
Okay. But that's an, while we're waiting, that's an excellent point by former Mayor Bailey. Uh, his plan did have a comprehensive park. Uh, former Mayor Ross, uh, his idea is to add one uh, playground piece of equipment every year. And, uh, so it's my responsibility to carry that forward and make sure we do that. And possibly the Community Keys organization is the answer to that, to help us add playground equipment as we expand that and meet the visions of the former mayors. Uh, it's a privilege of mine to be able to do that. Any other comments about the budget at all or the actions in the park? Everybody's satisfied? Okay. No other closing comments? Any closing comments, council members?
Mayor, I would just like to say that I think that Mr. Larry Griffin's beard is the coolest thing I've seen all day. So I don't know about everybody else, but, uh, he's got my vote for Rico Suave of the day. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next time, I'm gonna get mine going and look like Leon Russell with my hair down.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Please, council.
I'm gonna leave those two guys alone, but, uh, some citizens, uh, had some concern about the speed of traffic on Bonny Road. And the second thing is, um, the Historical Society is going to ask that the town of Blythewood look at the resolution that was signed in effect uh, last year by Mayor Ross on racism and, and, and Blythewood. There was a resolution that's done and they want, uh, the town to take an issue and put out, uh, put that resolution in the paper. Uh, they were looking at a back page that the town would put in to show that we've already taken uh, action prior to those protests and things that are going on about racism, uh, inequality in Blythewood.
Absolutely. And, uh, it's very timely. And I know we recently did that, uh, the resolution last, I believe it was last year. Uh, with on the table discussions we've had in our community and
That's correct.
We will certainly renew that. Absolutely. Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions? Sorry. A council member closing comment. Hearing none. Do we have a
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Man probably moved and seconded into adjourn tonight's meeting. Any discussion? I want to thank you all for good participation and, and we're doing the right thing for the town of Blythewood by stimulating the economy. And we will decide, Mr. Hesron, about July 4th very soon. Thank you all. Uh, all in favor say aye. All opposed? And the ayes have it. Thank you. We are adjourned.